Good evening, I'd like to call the board of the National Emergency Agency to the rear, to the right, to the left. Please go to the roll.
Robert Philbin.
Here.
James Mooney.
Here.
William Paul.
Here.
Jeffrey Riazzi.
Here.
Christine Bella Rosa.
Here.
Carol Keldar. Raymond McClary.
Here.
Scott Polston.
Here.
Timothy Wells.
Here.
Please rest for a pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And we'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of January eleventh, twenty twenty four. Looked by Mr. Polston, was seconded by Ms. Bella Rosa. Any discussion? Under your call for a vote, is there say aye?
Aye.
Student rep.
The Drama Club's performance of "Lingus" will be showing March first, second, and third in the auditorium, and registration for spring sports is open on family ID. The French Club Flea Market will be at the high school on February twenty-fourth from ten a.m. to three p.m. Ulster Bosys is holding a parent night this Thursday in the Port Ewen campus. Sessions start at six and a second session starts at seven p.m. And the boys wrestling team is sending two wrestlers to states next weekend. That's all I have.
Thank you. We got a virtual presentation. So right now, turn over to Dr. Shanker and Ulster Bosys.
Good evening, just want to double check, your sound is okay?
Yes.
Okay.
So, good evening, and first and foremost, appreciate the Saugerties Board's flexibility to allow us to join in and share with you virtually. We were hoping to be in person, but many, many of, well, not even snow, but snowy rain nights on board meetings, and then we have tried to get these in. So again, appreciate the flexibility, and as always, Dr. Ursig and team and board, we appreciate Saugerties partnership in everything that we do on behalf of our shared students. So, thank you so much for giving us a couple of minutes. I know that you have some documents in front of you, I will share this screen shortly, just want to take you through, just a walkthrough real quick of what you have in front of you. You have a copy of the PowerPoint, the Google slide deck. The deck that you have has far more slides than I will walk through tonight. If I was to walk through all of those, I'd have them here far later than you want to be here. So I'm going to go through and hit those highlights, but there is a lot of good information in there. You have a one sheet, which is basic overview of what I'll talk about. You have an FAQ, which are questions that have come to me through, from board members, through superintendents, from superintendents, around lots of the nuts and bolts of this particular project. And lastly, you have a one sheet, which covers some of the financials in a five-year outlook, which I'll cover at the end. And so, really, typically, Bosys doesn't come out to the eight boards to talk about leases. Leases are voted on by the Ulster Bosys Board. So when we leased Anna Divine, or when we leased out Marion, we didn't head out to the eight boards to have those conversations, those happen at the superintendent's table. But this particular project will get a little bit more media and press, and so really, in the sphere of transparency, wanted to come out either virtually or in person, and have an opportunity to talk with you and share a little bit about kind of three areas. Why we are here entertaining that, what the project entails, and that's from the kind of student to program end, and whether the logistics in terms of timeline and finances. So, I'm going to go ahead and give a shot at, to shift the screen. Can you see that?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So, Ulster Bosys at I Park. It really is about equity access and belonging, and really about timing. I believe the current conditions that we have, both on our career and tech side of the house and our K-12 side of the house, along with the opportunity to pursue this lease at I Park eighty-seven, presents an incredible opportunity, both for our shared students in career and technical education, as well as the K-12 special ed programming. Really, at the kind of most basic level, there's two components. It is a relocation of our current career and tech site, which is in Port Ewen, to a turnkey state-of-the-art lease space at I Park eighty-seven, and it is, can't see it now. Can you, you can't see the screen?
It's blurry. It's like, you know, there we go.
You're back.
Is that, is that big enough there? I'll keep it in that mode if that works.
If you can put it in presentation mode, so it's bigger.
Yeah, let me, let me just try to stop presenting and re-present, hold on a second. Hold on to your screen.
While we're, whoops, while we're waiting, before Meredith does sneak out, I do think that we need to recognize her, because this past weekend, she took first in her weight class at the women's tournament at the state level, it's not necessarily a state tournament at this year, but she took first, and her colleagues, we had four placers, Joel Luke took second place, Tara Telneck took fourth place, and one more missing, I'm thinking, I can't find her right now. Savannah Tittleback took first place. Congratulations.
So, just real quick, Dan, it's telling me I need permission to be able to share...
Rocko, is there something you can take care of?
I'm looking at you.
I'm not, I missed that, and I did hear a piece of it, I think.
Tim was saying, you guys wrestled together way back in the day.
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
You're much older, though.
Tim, I'm aware. Allow us to share a screen.
You can just share like you were before, I guess.
We must grant permissions.
Yes. Are you able to share like you were before?
Yeah, if it's not, um, if not allowing me to do that now. You want to try it?
Yeah.
Share that presentation with you?
Just fine.
One sec here.
Well, Naomi, why don't we have a just sort of screen while we're getting that ready?
Sure.
Jonah, I know, you know I'm here, so just really quick, while we're getting that ready, as the Saugerties Board representative to Bosys, just want to let you all know that one hundred percent, lots of questions, lots of things happening to bring this to you. So I just really want to support and advocate, as your representative, that there's a lot that's been going into this presentation, and really support where we're going with this, and any questions, at least I have something to ask. I'm here for you.
All right, Jonah, we're good.
Can you see that now?
Yeah, cut it up. Perfect.
Is that better?
Even better.
Okay. So, I will pick up where we're left off here. Outside of these two components, I think, one of the things that I'll talk a little bit about as we move forward, that really makes this exciting, is as we begin to think about the partners that we will be proximate to, when we think about county government and their workforce and economic development, and we think about SUNY Ulster, SUNY New Paltz, as well as Ulster Vote, it really will be, for the first time, and really a model for the state about how we begin to think about workforce and economic development by centering the twenty thousand students and their families in Ulster County as the foundation. I have been thinking and working on that for over a decade, and I deeply believe that this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to really bring that together in a financially responsible way. So let me take you through kind of our current condition, which prior to I Park, we were talking about. Our current CTC site, our Career Technical Center in Port Ewen, it sure was a former shirt factory, and really designed to serve at max about nine hundred students, four hundred fifty in the morning, the AN program, and about four hundred and fifty in the afternoon. We currently have twelve hundred students enrolled, six hundred in the morning, and six hundred in the afternoon. And while there is no SED-designated class size for career and tech, as we look across the state, look at class sizes, and we think about what's the appropriate amount of students in a technical trade class, the statewide average is twenty. And really, when you think about one teacher with, you know, thirty students and twenty welding days, or a house machine, or cosmetology, or automotive, it's really about safety, it's about integrity of delivery of instruction in a lab setting, and it is about students, their ability to maintain their first choice. When we look back in twenty eighteen, we've always had a fairly high percentage of juniors and seniors in the county attending career and technical education. We've always been in the top five of the state. And in twenty eighteen, we had about twenty-six percent, or about eight hundred and thirty of the thirty-two hundred juniors and seniors enrolled in a career and technical education pathway as a part of their experience in Saugerties. So sophomore year, identifying a career and technical pathway that blends in with their twenty-two credits in their five regions, some of the students received elective credits or math credits, English credits, et cetera, as they moved through. As we look at the percentage today, we have, we're approaching forty percent, thirty-eight percent of the twelve, or about twelve hundred students of our three thousand and eighty-three juniors are enrolled in Ulster Bosys Career Technical Education. And this is not an Ulster County phenomenon. As we look at declining enrollment across the state, career technical education numbers and enrollment continues to rise. And again, I'm not here to present about the whys and what is happening around that, but this is a factor as we look at the Blue Ribbon Commission recommendation, recommendation two states that all students should have access to career and technical education and/or career workforce integration opportunities as part of their progression, whether they're intending to go straight into work and/or college and beyond. And so, this is, this is the current reality. We have many students who come to us, get excited in their sophomore year, you know, identify, hey, I want to do an aviation program, and we try through equitable mechanism to place students from around the county in an equitable way into programming. But the reality is, with the numbers and the space, many of our students get their second or third choice, and we know that second or third choice for career and technical education does not equal engagement. Let me flip over to K-12 special ed. We have five communities in our K-12 special ed programs. We know a couple of things. We know that classification rates in this county, as well as the state and the country, are increasing. We know that the complexity of the IEPs are becoming more complex, and we know that the students who we are seeing with IEPs are getting younger. We also know that the need for short-term and long-term therapeutic transitional programs, that's what we call our TTP and LTTP programs, that interest and need has exponentially grown over the last couple of years. As we look at the number of students we have, the diversity of programs that we can offer, the reality is, is we still export approximately seven million dollars in tuition for special ed students that need to receive programming and services outside of Ulster County. As we look back again, twenty eighteen, we had one program, we had the Port Ewen campus is essentially a upper middle high school program with about a hundred and seventeen students, and this year, we're projected to close the year with three hundred. Our staff size grew since twenty eighteen from a hundred and sixteen to nearly two hundred and fifty-five, and we still continue to try to find harder to fill positions. Again, we are not alone in that. We know that teacher shortages are real, especially in difficult certification areas to fill. I think this slide speaks to where we're at in our current scenario in our K-12 special ed. As you all know, last year, we brought online Mount Marian in Saugerties to continue to grow and provide for our students K-12 special ed. A couple of years prior to that, we leased the Anna Divine site in Kingston. When we opened Anna Divine, we opened at about forty or forty-five percent. We are now at capacity with a waiting list of nearly thirty-five or so students. Same scenario for Mount Marian, about thirty to forty percent. And as we look back, before I take you to this chart, as we look back at the last five years, and we look at the number of intakes, referrals, that we get from our eight districts, and we look at the rate at which we accept students, and we begin to map that equation, that algorithm out over the next several years, and we can do that because classifications are on the rise. This is the scenario that we have in front of us, twenty-three, twenty-four, two of our buildings near capacity, twenty-four, twenty-five, two over and one nearing, and in twenty-five and twenty-six and beyond, the conversation at the special ed director, PPS, level is, we don't have any seats for any more students. One thing that is important to note is, prior to Anna Divine and Mount Marian, we didn't have a self-feeder, so we only took middle high schools students and graduated. We now have a building in Anna Divine that's at capacity with waiting lists, that's going to age up to Mount Marian, that will age up to Port Ewen, and so on and so forth, and so you can see that trend as we look there. When we opened Anna Divine and did the analysis of what programs to open, that number of seven million that I talked about in terms of exported tuitions was hovering around the same amount. When we opened Anna Divine, we were able to decrease that to about four and a half, just under five million dollars, and since then, the boom has continued, and it's risen back up. There is a much larger competition that needs to happen at the state level about what is happening, why this increase, but again, that's not this presentation that we have to deal with, students who are right in front of us by law. We are intend to provide for special ed students in the least restrictive, least restrictive environment, and so if we can't provide for them, and it's not a program matched in district, the next least restrictive is an in-county Bosys placement. And so, as we look at the solution, which I'll go to next, it provides that flexibility to begin to capture and provide both the needed academics and, you know, social, emotional, therapeutic supports for these students. So, on the left side, I'll start at the top, our current CTC, it has about sixty thousand square feet of classroom and lab space. There's a ninety thousand total square footprint, but again, the shirt factory doesn't lend itself to, to really to a technical education center. Our current enrollment, about twelve hundred. The new lease at I Park would increase that by thirty thousand feet with a projected capacity of approximately eight hundred students, and it isn't just for career and tech, it's for all pathways, programs, and opportunity for program expansion. Our current footprint on the special ed site, we have three sites, the Port Ewen site, which is the two-story building, again, projected enrollment at the end of the year of about three hundred, moving to the four sites, and a repurposing of the old career and tech center to a new middle high school campus, would allow us to provide and grow into programming for approximately five hundred and seventy students. I do have a video coming up at some point, I'm not sure, would share how that'll work. If it doesn't work, Dr. Ursig, I'll send you a link to this, and you can share that with the board to watch after, but I don't want to get too jammed up with the technology. Let's see if it plays. This will give you kind of a snapshot into how we're thinking about the I Park site for career tech and pathways programs.
Located in the heart of Ulster County, the former home and campus of IBM is being repurposed as an engine for economic development. Acquired by National Resources and now going by the name of I Park eighty-seven, this impressive facility will soon be home to a number of innovative Ulster County companies. In order to meet the demand for a skilled workforce, I Park eighty-seven and Bosys are working towards developing the next generation of training centers by attracting specific companies to live on site. Companies in the industries of automotive technology, battery storage, energy transition, manufacturing, construction, food and beverage, catering, dairy, data and fiber, and others. The goal of this partnership is to cultivate both a trained workforce as well as a multitude of opportunities for Ulster County residents. This educational facility will be located in the heart of I Park eighty-seven and will provide training specific to these companies. Bosys is looking to take approximately one hundred thousand square feet in order to facilitate this wide array of offerings and hands-on training for students. The goal is to help these individuals acquire the right skills to obtain the jobs that are happening right here in Ulster County. Most importantly, the companies themselves will have a hand in curriculum, which will cultivate employer-employee relationships from the very beginning, while allowing students to progress seamlessly through training programs and immediately start jobs upon completion.
Ulster Bosys at I Park eighty-seven is an amazing and exciting, once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. It's really about all of our students in Ulster County deserving a viable pathway, access and equity to be able to be the designers of their future.
Over one-third of all juniors and seniors in Ulster County go through the Bosys program, and this will be exactly the type of facility these students need and deserve. The facilities offered here will be state-of-the-art training centers that will provide the real skills needed for today's jobs. I Park eighty-seven is working closely with Bosys to provide a turnkey operation so that they can hit the ground running. There has been great support from the private sector, the county, and the state in order to make this succeed, be part of it. Located in the heart of Ulster...
So, that's on the, that's on the I Park side. Equally as exciting is really this reimagining of middle high school experience for our students with IEPs who come to us from our eight component districts, as well as partially twenty-two districts outside of Ulster County. As we think about the repurposing of the career and tech center, the current career and tech center, the intention is to, is to create micro-communities that are specific for both the academic and therapeutic needs of these populations of students, as well as maintain lab spaces that we can backmap skills into, so that our students, who are shared students who come to us, are even more prepared to move over as juniors and seniors to the pathways, a tech center, are even more prepared for robust post-secondary planning, are even more prepared to exit with connectivity around real-world internships, externships, credentialing programs, two-year institutions. Again, the synergy that we're talking about at I Park transcends career and tech, and it transcends just Bosys. One of the things that is critical is creating this hub, so that all students in Ulster County that have the need for experiences outside their school can access that. We know that in Ulster County, most of our community partners, our industry partners, are small to mid-sized businesses who aren't equipped to navigate eight different districts. We also know that our eight districts, again, aren't staff in the way to ensure that they can navigate, you know, this private sector or extensions to classrooms. We have wonderful, hard-working guidance counselors, workplace learning coordinators, et cetera, but inherent in who Bosys is, is to make it really accessible for districts to access that type of service, kind of single-point entry, so that if there's a guidance counselor in Saugerties who has a student who's a sophomore, who isn't going to attend career and tech, but wants an external experience, that guidance counselor can lean on this hub to say, hey, we have a student that's looking to do this, what's out there, and we can help provide that connective tissue to make it really easy to place those students, and also for the business and industry to make it easy for them to participate. We know that all of that time costs money, and so the more efficient that we can get around that, the better the experience is, the more access to the experiences, and more efficient and cost-effective it is. Let me get into really the cost and timeline, and then we'll open it up if there are some comments or questions. But we had this conversation a couple of years ago, and it ended, but there's a couple of things that are different. One on the financial side, and I think one in terms of myself and the team's approach to negotiating with National Resources, I Park, and the county, et cetera. Back about two years ago, we talked about it, the economics of the build-out made this near impossible, and the conversation ended at the superintendent's table. When we rekindled this conversation, as myself and team kind of took over in these leadership roles, one thing was mission critical, and that was the developer would need to fund the retrofit of this space, turning us over a ready-to-go, state-of-the-art space, and so that is part of this new construct, is National Resources funding the nearly ten million dollar retrofit of that. The only piece that's left is the lease cost, same as we had a lease cost for Anna Divine, Mount Marian, as we divided that up across. A couple of other things. A couple of other things that were mission critical was that we would not pay a dime and we needed a runway before we moved in. And really what that does is we think about the timeline, as I'll show you in a second. That timeline, just for kind of starting point, we think about from this past September when we really started planning. And what that does is it allows districts this budget year, as well as next budget year, to step into the lease costs, which I'll show you in a second. There's a couple other components that you'll see in the FAQ language. Again, we don't have a lease that is direct. We have a draft lease that's currently being reviewed by our council. I also made a commitment to the eight superintendents that after our council reviews it, that we'll be turning that lease over to them, for each of the district councils to review that. And the idea here is transparency. If there are questions, we want to get solutions to those. We can move forward in the election as eight community here in Ulster County. Something else happens with this move. As you all know, two years ago, you voted on a capital project for Ulster BOCES. And that capital project intended to do majority of the work in the career and tech around, you know, not the blabbering glitzy stuff, but our adjustable fire system, our HVAC, our windows, our envelope, et cetera. And that work we were intending to do while students were in. That would drive us to do work on swing shifts in evenings, condensed periods in the summer. We know that that cost of doing that work is significantly more. The way that the capital project money flows and dovetails into this particular lease project and timeline would allow us to do the planning we need to do over the next several months, begin construction in May on the envelope work at I Park, and really targeting a move-in a year from this summer, being ready to open our doors in September of 25, 26 school year. What that does is give us a vacant, existing career and technical space to go in and do the needed work. There is a cost savings in that. And that is part of the way that we will be able to keep budget-neutral, the retrofit of that building, to convert that into the special ed center. So let me go back here and walk you through Sawgarees lease cost. Lease costs are divvied up by component districts, by what they call ARVADA. It's a formula that is by law the way we need to divvy up leases. You can see your one through five cost with an estimated 2% annual increase. You can then move over to the right and see Sawgarees A ratio and what that A ratio equates to in dollars. And then you see the actual cost on the right side to Sawgarees on an annual basis. Again, two years to step into that, this budget cycle, and next budget cycle, and then picking up these lease costs as part of the contribution to the shared lease. So that's the financials. That is the timeline. In September '25, we would then do that retrofit of the career and technical space, conversion to the new middle high school campus. We'd be able to do that over the year and then be ready to open and begin to build into, or staff into, the special ed, new special ed middle high school campus in school year '26, '27. I'll show you before we go to questions, just really quickly. If you look at this slide, the first series of check marks, that's the capital project that you all voted on. Right? Each one of the boards voted on. You can see basic overview of site work, leasing area, thermal envelope, windows, doors, et cetera, et cetera. The capital project is not changing. The work that needs to be done at Career and Tech is the work that needs to be done at the Port Ewen, existing Career and Tech, whether it's a tech center, whether it's a special ed center, or whether it was repurposed in another direction. As you look down, the checkbox is in the right side. You'll see one box here, third from the bottom, reconfigure floor plan. That was the only money out of the voted capital project that we intended to do some shifting of spaces. That was our attempt to kind of remove the shared factor, reveal, and create some openness. Was about $1.3 million out of the total $39 million capital project. We would use that $1.3 to do the reconfiguration, not for Career and Tech, but for new middle special ed campus. That coupled with the savings in how we can do the same work is what keeps, again, budget-neutral the conversion. So at the end of this, we have a new career tech center. We've got a new middle high school campus. We're working towards solving space and programming issue. And we're really situated as a county, eight districts, BOCES, the county, the two years, the four years. And again, there are several other educational partners that are looking at it to really be the lighthouse of what's possible when we're thinking about all students here in Ulster County. So I'll take a deep breath and drink. I will stop sharing screen. And I am happy to take some questions or if there are comments. Again, I'll let, I can't see, I won't be able to see who's raising. So if somebody could, Dr. Ursig, if you could help me facilitate that on your side, if there's any questions or comments.
What's the lag in the state aid payback on these numbers?
So when you issued your, you issued your aid back the following year. Correct? I think that's what you, so you're talking about, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the BOCES cycle for all aid.
Okay.
Anybody else? Any comments that you want to share?
I think it's a great idea.
Awesome. And again.
Hang on one second, Jonah.
Hi. Good evening, Dr. Shanker. Thank you for the presentation. I'm wondering, I know the frequently asked questions, National Resources is going to pay for the build-out. If you could just talk a little bit about, you know, the role that BOCES will have and state ed will have to make sure that, you know, we're building spaces that are, you know, what is our role, I guess? What is the role of the BOCES to make sure that these spaces are being developed to our specifications? You know, and again, to the very highest level of what we should expect in the 21st century.
Yeah, thank you. That's a great question. And, you know, so we've engaged since the beginning with SED, with state ed, with their attorneys, their planning, their facilities. And they are very excited that we engaged with them this early and not come to them with plans to say, does this work? We have consultation with land architects, who are our school architects, as well as the Palongo Group, who is facilitating our capital project to ensure that, again, first and foremost, that safety is paramount, right? If we're going to build a school, there are requirements by SED. Inherent in the lease, and again, that lease will be shared with Dr. Ursig and attorney or attorney, there will be language in there. Things like if a business wants to move into I Park and approximate to a school or going to be located next to the school, we will have the right to send to facilities at SED a kind of site approval to ensure that, no different if you were building a site and there was something next to it, that we're legal to operate a school within proximity of said business. Obviously, all the safety in terms of number of entrances and hallways and our own entry and security, all of that stuff has to be in place prior to. How we ensure that is, and again, inherent in the lease, is that we will have a site plan that will be drawn up. That site plan, before work begins, will be sent up to SED to review. And they will issue a letter to us that states, so long as the building is done to the scope of the plan, as a CO for occupancy, which is what they would do on lease phase, will be issued. So that review happens upfront and not on the tail end. In terms of the 21st century, I think, you know, or beyond, I think that's one of the areas that is most exciting. We need to be thinking about the career and technical education of tomorrow and not yesterday. And there are many things that need to shift in terms of how career and tech is offered here in New York. We have wonderful teachers doing wonderful things, but we have a bit of an outdated container in which we offer it. And really, that doesn't start with just educators. It starts with our intact, kind of robust steering committees who have the folks who are going to be hiring these students, who say, this is really, these are the skills we really want to see. This is what space should look like in preparation. And so it won't just be educators designing a footprint, but a collaborative process to ensure that our career and tech center represents jobs of our students' future, not necessarily us and our current future. So that from a programming end is perhaps the most exciting, most exciting opportunity. And again, I'll go back to the proximity to the businesses on site as well as the connectivity, this hub to access building, community and industry partners outside. I do believe we as a county, the eight districts, the BOCES, will be the model, be the lighthouse of what this extension to your schools, our schools, our shared schools and students should look like as we move forward. So again, that question will have me chatting too long. As usual, I'm getting a nod from Amanda, but it is super exciting.
So is it fair to just summarize by saying that Ulster BOCES will have a hand and we will get what we want as a community versus just being turned over a space to use?
Absolutely. We are going to be at the table. And again, I've offered the other districts. And I promise you, if there's two on one night, it'll be in person at yours and zooming someone else's. But I am happy as we move forward and begin to crystallize space design, programming, again, to come back out in whatever capacity. Or obviously, I'll be sharing with Dr. Ursig, but to come back out and share a little bit about where we're at as we move through the process. We'll also have a website that will go live, that will keep communities in public abreast to the forward motion and progress.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Shanker and Ulster BOCES for joining us. This is a super exciting time, right? It's all about opportunities for kids. It's going to help our CTE students, it will help our special education population. And it's really going to be cutting-edge. And as Dr. Shanker said, we could really be the beacon or lighthouse for New York State. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you and appreciate your flexibility again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thanks. Good night.
Mr. Martelli, showtime.
While this is coming up, I just want to thank everyone first. The board, the community, the students, teachers here. Everyone has been really, really great and supportive. I'm approaching a month now, so. Perfect. So everyone has just made me feel incredibly welcome. So I just wanted to say thank you to everybody. I wanted to share with you all what has been going on at the high school and really focus on the district's priorities of student achievement, culture, climate, community, and safety. There were a few goals established before I started here. And then I added some additional throughout that we'll monitor throughout the rest of the year as well. So. Let's start with student achievement. The first goal was to identify and monitor at-risk students and students in subgroup populations to decrease the gap between these subgroups. The second was to increase student performance on the New York State Regents exams, as well as increasing the number of students performing at the mastery level. And the third was to increase the graduation rate from currently, it's at 90% to 92%. So I'll start off with the steps we've taken to achieve these goals so far. Every week, there are at-risk meetings with cohort teams at all the grade levels. These teams consist of building administration, counselors, social workers, psychologists. We look at everything from course failures to attendance, behavior, student needs, and explore different interventions, including credit recovery options. We will track their progress each week and see how well these interventions are working. So this has really become about building an individualized plan for the students to ensure that we're giving them the best opportunity for success. I wanted to start quickly by looking over the Regents results from last school year. Now, I'm one of the biggest believers that a test score does not define a student. There are so many other things that make each student unique. New York State uses these exams as a common benchmark. And it's currently a required element to receive a diploma. But I do see the benefit to the Regents exams right now because we can really use these tests to identify gaps and see where to focus instruction. I don't want to spend too much time on all these results, but I did want to show you that Sawgarees continues to perform above New York State's average proficiency level. You'll see in ELA, algebra, geometry, living environments, earth science, global, and US. We are, if not meeting it, we're exceeding it at all levels. Now. We'll start with how we are getting that, how we got there. In math, we started a graphing calculator fundamentals course, which does a lot more than improves student understanding of how to use the calculator. It really helps them develop an understanding of graphs, reflections, translations, which has really improved student performance in algebra. Teachers have also held Regents review sessions, both in class and after school. There's been additional dual-language support for our L students with the subject teacher, the L teacher, and student volunteers. And also instructional skills classes have been added for additional special education supports. We also have peer tutoring programs held during study halls and after school. We'll be conducting item analysis from prior regions to identify trends in areas of focus. Teachers have been utilizing common professional periods for course collaboration and creating common language across all the grade levels. We've also added an ENL counselor and a teaching assistant for our L students to really provide that extra support. I think one of the biggest things you have to look at as well is in student achievement, is really the relationships that the teachers have with the students. The teachers here have done an amazing job building those relationships. And we know that if a student feels welcomed and safe in the class, they're more engaged, which directly increases student achievement. I also wanted to take a quick look at the advanced placement courses that we offer. And as you can see, the majority of the classes, we've increased the number of enrollment in each class. But one of the goals that I really wanted to add was to increase the number of students who are currently taking the advanced placement test at the end of each course. These tests cost almost $100 each. So one thing I wanted to focus on is just how we can make this more equitable for the students here. Lastly, I wanted to touch on BOCES. Now, I got to visit BOCES last week for the first time. And it was a really amazing place to visit. I never realized just the amount of projects and work and things that the students are working on. Last year, we had about 93 students enrolled at BOCES with a 99% passing rate. This year, we're up to 107 students. We have 100% passing rate. And 51 students from Sawgarees currently have an average of a 90% or higher at BOCES. So I think this is really something to celebrate. This month, at the end of the month, our 10th graders will be visiting BOCES to take a look at these programs. We have a lot of students interested. We're hoping to fill up at least two buses. And then there's other dates next month that students who can't attend this month can attend next month. And then there's other dates next month that students who can't attend this month can attend next month. One of the programs that has helped a lot of the students here is the Sawyer Credit Connect program, where students can recover credit for previously failed classes. Uh, they're also able to acquire credit if they're deficient for their grade level or if there are scheduling conflicts. So last year, we had about eight students complete eight classes, and as of February this year, we have about fifteen students that have completed about eighteen classes. These are just some examples of students who are utilizing the Apex program here that might not be for, you know, I failed this class, now I need to regain the credit. But for students who are really, you know, they want to attend BOCs, but they can't fit all the courses in their schedule. Or, you know, we had a student from Guatemala who arrived late May last year. Uh, rather than, um, starting immediately into classes, he was enrolled in some Apex programs, which gives language support and which really helped him excel right now. We had a senior who was, his family was moving in the middle of the year and wasn't going to be able to graduate with his class, who was able, able to utilize the Apex program, so now he can walk with his class in June. One of the areas that schools across the US have needed to focus on has been student attendance. Uh, it's really hard to increase student achievement if the students are not in school. So the hope is to reduce the overall rate of chronic absenteeism this year by at least five percent. Um, if you look at this graphic, I know it's a little difficult to read. Um, but if a student misses fifteen days a year from the time they're in kindergarten to their senior year, they're actually missing an entire full year of instruction. So one of the goals here, and really, you know, I think the attendance just affects everything in the school, is just to increase the number of students attending on a daily basis. So you can see in this little snapshot, the percentage of students in attendance this year compared to last year. And it has increased in almost every grade level. So what we've been doing is really taking a deeper look into what's causing the rate of chronic absenteeism to go up. Um, we're exploring obstacles, whether it be transportation, financial, uh, is it a lack of engagement or a lack of belonging? We know that if a student doesn't feel like they belong, then they're less likely to come to school every day. So the goal is to identify these barriers and really create those individualized interventions. Uh, we have attendance meetings with students and families, student attendance improvement plans. We have social emotional learning in the classrooms to help increase those skills students need to be successful. We have more access to mental health supports. Uh, we really want to increase the communication with parents and families, so we can all really work together to help improve attendance. We also offered a bunch of new classes this year, which does help to increase engagement, which again improves student attendance. Uh, and after talking to a lot of the students in these classes, they're really enjoying what's going on. So there's that motivation, you know, to come to school every day. Uh, I did link our course catalog, if anyone wanted to take a look at a more in-depth description of these courses. But one of the programs I really wanted to highlight is the creation of the science research program, because I really think that Sawgeres can take this program and really run with it. So I'm going to have Ms. Defino just come up real quick, um, and just tell you more about it. She brought this program to Sawgeres, so I think she's the best person to just explain what it is and what you can really do with it.
Hi, everybody. Um, so I'll talk a little more about the research class. It's a huge passion of mine. I got to teach it before I was the assistant principal for seventh through ninth grade. So this is a class students take for three years. It's through the University of Albany. Um, and they get to do really what is in my experience, um, college level and even graduate level research, um, as high school students. So they spend their first year trying to figure out what exactly they want to study. Um, we have kids studying everything from neuroscience to very advanced robotic engineering to invasive species. Um, and then they seek a scientific mentor who is a practicing researcher with a PhD at university um, to work with them on their project. In their second year, we have four students right now in their second year of the program. Um, they come together with their project proposal and start doing the methods on their experiment. Um, next year, we'll have students in their third and final year of the program, where they are writing a research paper with the goal of being published. Um, and I also want to highlight one of our eleventh grade students, Becky Lee, just got a three hundred dollar research grant from the New York Institute of Technology, um, to continue working on her project. So it is a really, really exciting thing that we are offering.
So I want to move to culture, climate, and community, uh, with a focus really on increasing family participation and involvement, increasing student voice, and increasing both student and staff sense of belonging. Um, so this is just the plan on how we're going to get there. We want to plan more events for parents, families, and the community to really increase the communication between the school and the entire community. Uh, we've increased the number of club offerings for students, recently held grade level meetings where we just encourage the students to get more involved, to try things out of their comfort zone. If they don't like one club, try a different one. We also wanted to involve students and families in decision-making and really prioritize those teacher-student relationships. Again, I think it all comes back to relationships. The more positive relationships a student has with adults and peers in school, the more engaged they're going to be, in which turn is going to decrease student absences and increase student achievement. I also wanted to look at, you know, more professional development and culturally responsive teaching to help increase that sense of belonging. So our support team has really been amazing here. Uh, they help with crisis management, identifying, resolving student issues and needs. They collaborate with outside agencies, perform individual and group counseling. So without them, I don't think the high school would be where it is right now. So I just wanted to give a shout out to all of our support staff here. Lastly, I just want to take a look, quick look at safety. You know, first, the physical safety is the most important for our students right now. Um, we do have our SRO, Travis in the building, who is a great asset to the school and the community. Um, we have new camera software. Uh, you know, we just instituted the ID badges in the building. Uh, we have our security officer at the front. We have construction on the main entrance vestibule. Um, but I also think we have to look at, when you hear safety, the emotional and psychological safety of the students. So how are we creating an environment where the students feel safe to be themselves and express their thoughts and ideas? I think this goes back to what we were talking about with culture, climate, and community. If you create that sense of community within the school, the students are going to feel safer. You'll see that rate of chronic absenteeism drop. You'll see student achievement increase. So I think, you know, it all ties together. So I just want to thank everyone for their support again. I want to thank Ms. Pipitone and Ms. Defino. They have been great assistant principals here. Um, and the amount of support again has just been great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public recognition. Uh, if anyone wishes to address the board, please approach the podium, state your name and residence, and feel free to speak.
My name is Amy Cobb Mills, and I reside at Fifty-four Dooley Drive. Good evening, Board of Education and Dr. Ursic. I'm here tonight to give you an update on the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four inaugural season for our girls wrestling team. The momentum to implement girls wrestling is growing across the country. Forty-five states have added women's wrestling programs and have approved official championships. New York will host the first ever state championship in twenty-twenty-five at the MVP Arena. On the collegiate level, the NCAA just announced that they are working on getting a championship in two thousand twenty-six. In our section, Section Nine, and the sections across the state, they saw a surge in the number of participants as schools added girls teams, whether they had seven girls, one girl, or twenty-seven girls. So here's a recap of our girls' season. We had four seasoned returners and three new to the sport. We hosted our first and only girls' training in, on January fifth with Minnesick Valley and Middletown. While we didn't have many home events, the girls were on the road, traveling to several high-profile tournaments between Long Island and Albany. The tournaments that were attended included the Koksaki Athens Girls Tournament, the Dames of Thrones Tournament, and the Shaker Queen of the Mack Tournament. Each athlete had their share of ups and downs across the board. They have all made improvements and have had fantastic accomplishments at each event. Sawgeres sent two girls to the Eastern States Tournament held at Sullivan County Community College this year. This year marked the twentieth anniversary of the biggest wrestling tournament on the East Coast, with schools from eight states sending qualified wrestlers. There were approximately five hundred and fifty participants, more boys than girls, from a hundred and sixty-two schools in those eight states. This was the third year that the tournament had a girls' division, which was well-attended and lots of upsets. In the tw- the twenty-twenty-four New York State Public High School Athletic Association Girls Wrestling Invitational was held at the SRC Arena in Syracuse in January. Seven hundred and fifty girls applied to participate in this event, and two hundred and eight were accepted. Sawgeres sent three girls, Savannah Tittleback, Kira Talani- Tal- Talaniak, and Meredith Mills. After this year, the girls will have their own official state tournament, and will have to qualify by winning the weight class of their sectional tournament. Which brings me to the final event in their season, the Section Nine Tournament, held this past weekend at FDR High School. Out of sixteen teams in the girls' division, the Lady Sawyers placed second behind Minnesick Valley. In the hundred-and-seven-pound weight class, Joelle Luke took second. Kiera took fourth in her sectional debut, and Gianna Bender took fourth in the hundred-and-eighty-five-pound weight class. Riley Sanders and Delia Lopez had solid performances in their first sectional tournament. Last but not least, Savannah took first in the hundred-and-fourteen-pound weight class, and Meredith took first in the hundred-and-forty-five-pound weight class. So next year, if this were this year, or if next year were this year, they'd be going to the state tournament. We would like to thank the administration for their continued support, Mr. Malinow for navigating this season, which, by the way, we need banners for these sectional champions, Coach Kapler for taking the helm and being a patient and supportive coach, and to all the parents who stepped up, packed snacks, provided transportation, and were the best cheering section ever. Our program can't grow without your continued support, and we are looking forward to watching our team grow in participation over the next few years. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I'll turn it over to Dr. Ursic.
Just a couple of updates. I'll be brief. Uh, number one, strategic, well, strategic, those are going to surprise me, sorry. Strategic planning update, the survey has closed. Uh, we had a hun- one thousand twenty-three participants, uh, according to what I was previewing just prior to. Um, the board will be having the retreat for February twenty-second. The community stakeholder meeting will be February twenty-eighth. There, if you're interested in participating as a community member, please complete the, uh, brief questionnaire on our website, uh, for that. Secondly, uh, the governor's proposal came out for state aid. Um, we would stand to lose four hundred and forty thousand dollars in foundation aid if the governor's, uh, proposed budget does go through. Uh, I've attended several meetings with, uh, various legislators. Everybody is, uh, pretty set on that that won't happen, uh, but we do have the plan for it. So we will have a budget that will kind of accept those changes, and hopefully one that will maintain our current level of foundation aid. Also, I just want to point out, and the state aid runs, the UPK funding, uh, in my opinion, is a little bit misleading, uh, because there is, it shows that an increase of funding, but that is only if we have an increased participant, student participants. At this time, at Mount Marion, we've got eighty spots filled. We have no waiting lists. We have not had a waiting list for the past two years there. Um, so there's not necessarily a high demand for it in our area, and space-wise, Mount Marion is all, rooms are occupied or leased out, so we cannot expand. Uh, I did want to, uh, take a moment to recognize our amazing CDP students who have put together our snow day and two-hour delay videos. Uh, they've been a big hit. Um, so looking forward to more of those, hopefully, some real snow. Uh, thank you to everybody's flexibility this winter as we navigate the weather forecast, the changing forecast, and yet the changing forecast again. So thank you, parents, for that. Uh, we'll give a, a full recap next month of winter sports as they come to a close. Uh, PARP is underway, so you'll see some, uh, many of our elementary and junior high students, uh, reading and, uh, with the Mario Kart theme for that, so thank you to Ms. Riazzi for that, and also as all of our PTA, uh, groups. Uh, the play was already mentioned, and then lastly, I just wanted to, uh, recognize Mr. Petcho. Uh, this Thursday, his ninth and twelfth grade, uh, classes will be presenting their work, um, as part of their PBL project. Uh, Ms. Petcho had the opportunity to go to California last year for this. Um, just a project overview. Uh, he was using mu- music as a focus. Students have selected and explored important personal and social issues. Students demonstrated what they had learned through poetry, artwork, design, research, and web development. And students' lyrics were turned into recorded music by volunteer musicians. So he has reached out to, to make that happen for our kids. So that's happening Thursday in, in our media center during the day. So thank you to everybody. With that, we will turn it over for Ted Protek and BBL for update.
Good evening. Jeff Andrews of EDL and Jim Bupar with that for section. Uh, we're going to cover, uh, where you are with the capital project. Uh, again, we'll cover the main capital improvement project, uh, touch base on the capital outlay project. Touch on the building condition survey, and then allow some questions at the end if there are any. Uh, first slide here is basically the completion schedule that we're looking at across the various buildings that we're working, uh, this project began, began last summer. Uh, we recently here kind of stopped the work that was available to us at the Morse Elementary School. We're still waiting for a fire curtain for installation. Uh, other areas, we kind of ran out of the areas that we can work, so, uh, this is what's remaining yet in the twenty-twenty-four year. Uh, we've got work happening over the summer for hazardous material abatement, that's occurring at various locations throughout the district. Uh, the junior, senior high school, uh, we're looking at mid-March to get in there, uh, start working on the secure vestibule. Uh, right now, the school is, uh, agreed upon a plan to move the existing vestibule to, uh, space adjacent to the admin area. Uh, that allows us to access that area, uh, that we're doing secure vestibule in, all the loud noise occurring, of course, off-hours, and then be able to wrap that up and turn that over to the school prior to the end of the year. Uh, also, we're looking at doing some work that we're working with the general, uh, work contractor and putting their final touches on a plan that'll allow us to get on top of, uh, Kidl Elementary School to do some demolition during the spring break, and then continue to do the tuck point and the measuring work, uh, throughout the rest of the year. Um, we've got also work happening at the junior, senior high in Cahill during the summer, so we'll continue on with that work through there. Uh, Morse Elementary School, once we have the curtain ready to place, we can go ahead, get that in place, get the other items buttoned up that will allow us to remove that partition that's separating the gymnasium, turn that over to the school. And then we have other work that's happening that will occur over the summer. Uh, Mount Marion Elementary School, primarily, we've got some work on the exterior, uh, doing some of the playground asphalt that's there in site work, as well as putting a new switch here that'll occur during the summer. And then Recorry Elementary School, again, we've got a little And then Recarrie Elementary School, again, we've got a little work that's happening there with the vestibules over the summer. Anticipation is that we will be substantially complete by the end of the summer, and we'll be able to close that project out in fall. Just kind of catching up, we've kind of adjusted this diagram as we've gone from the initial bid phases to completion, and just kind of showing as we're tracking on. We are currently on target. We have had some stumbling blocks in the past with some of our prime contractors, and we've been working with the school to try and get some access to some of these areas a little earlier to allow us some buffer as we get into the summer, or 20th. These are some slides of some of the work as they are currently. We've kind of given some progress photos. Jim's got an awesome camera that took some really good photos, so we're going to give him some credit with some of these. The high school auditorium has its kind of original bleaching here. Morse Elementary School, again, that's some of the work that we're going to do over the summer with the pavement, but the interior of that, we do have some work that's been done. The sound clouds on the left allows for some of that redistribution of sound as it's occurring here. We've got the exterior brick kind of showing where we are on the exterior of that work, and on the interior, on the lower right-hand corner, you can see the new stage and the light shining off of it. And we had some progress photos as those were going up as well. Jim, you want to cover the capital outlet project, or is this, or pushing on to you? So really switching to the capital outlet project, we've talked about this process in the past, moving to more of a four-year model. I'm not going to go into it in detail. What I did add, might be a little hard to see on the screen here, is that for year one, the project we're talking about right now is the school year 2023, 2024, the cap outlet project. And really where we sit right now is the project's been submitted to SED at the beginning of this month, so we're awaiting review so that we can then go on to the next step, which would be bidding the project and then from there, construction. So we'll continue to update that as we have more. Now, on this last slide, lots of text I'm not going to read at all, but really, we've been also engaging with the district and the Facilities Committee as well recently about the building condition survey, so you can see the abbreviation VCS, that's what we're referring to. I do want to point out some of the main purposes of the VCS, because I think they are important. So part of it is, and I say supposedly, because I've never had this actually confirmed, but it would make sense, that New York State uses some of that information so that they can ultimately plan accordingly for what their building inventory, capital expenditures will be. So that's part of it. Another piece is really for the district, that they have a reference document that serves as an inventory of things that really are going to, at some point, need attention. They may not all need it now, but you at least have one collective document that really becomes that reference. The third thing is really, is also a tool for the district so that you can plan for future capital projects, right? So the current capital project originated from the last VCS, which was the 2015 year, because they've done some reshuffling at SED with the years. And then really, the last one that I think is an important reason for it is, ultimately, when the district submits any capital project, SED, the Office of Facilities Planning, part of that VCS document includes a five-year plan. That doesn't get submitted, but there's a piece in it that does, which is the executive summary. So that has to show the scope of work and whatever project's being submitted to SED at that point. So collectively, those are some important pieces. As I mentioned, we did meet recently with the Facilities Committee. We started to evaluate the first building, which happened to be Morse Elementary. We're going to continue monthly to review other buildings and what those priority needs would be. And then, actually, since this slide was printed just a few days ago, I know Dr. Ursig has actually submitted the VCS, so that obligation, if you will, with the district and SED has been completed. As far as the next steps, yes, really looking at continuing to work with the Facilities Committee on the other buildings, look at those needs. Continue from that to develop that five-year plan with the executive summary, like I mentioned the need for that. And then, again, it starts to forecast what is the next capital project needs. With that, I don't know if the Board has any questions? Good, thank you very much.
Number one, Board new remarks?
I just wanted to remind everybody that the lay-in is, if you didn't see the sign driving in, is March 1st, 2nd, and 3rd. I wanted to thank Mrs. McDougall and Mr. Z for all the hard work they've put in so far. And then we have a community member, Mr. Gene O'Donovan. He doesn't even have students here at the school, but he's been donating his time and his skills to lead and build most of the set. And then I also want to thank all the parents that have offered their time and muscle so far to get everything put together as much as it is, and just a couple more days and the set should be done. Thank you.
I just wanted to, again, congratulate the athletes that were mentioned this evening, but I also want to give a shout-out to the Sawgarees Youth Hockey Association, who we had a number of elementary students and junior high students who participated at the Empire State Games in Lake Placid last weekend. The boys 10U team came in with a gold medal. The girls 12U team came home with a gold medal, and the 14U girls came home with a bronze medal. And they were pretty much undefeated. I think they tied all their games and actually lose a game during the tournament, so I want to congratulate them. And also, the Sawgarees Skating Club had a number of figure skaters who also brought home medals. I'm not sure if any of them are students here in Sawgarees, but I'm sure some of them are, so I want to congratulate all of them as well. Thank you.
Mr. Wall?
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Just a few, a few comments, hopefully. I do want to thank Dr. Shanker for the presentation on the Hyde Park. I think that's, you know, something that is, as everybody's mentioned, pretty exciting to see, a lot of the collaboration is taking place in terms of the infrastructure, the workplace needs that we have growing drastically and going unfilled dramatically in New York State. So I think any kind of collaboration that brings together government resources, our school resources, but more importantly, private industry, really to try to build the solution, the solution that we know is across the state, right? In terms of how many employers are looking for folks that have the requisite skillset, the soft skills, many times, that's really all they're looking for. Employers will tell educators, they'll tell students, they'll tell parents, if they have employability skills, we can teach them all the rest. Nonetheless, having an opportunity to teach and learn in a setting that's specifically oriented towards that kind of, you know, that kind of collaboration, that kind of synergy, it's a pretty exciting idea. So I appreciate the fact that they were able to come back and present for us. I do want to share some other congratulations. The wrestlers that we have, that are going to the States, the accomplishments of the female wrestling team, the girls' wrestling team, absolutely outstanding. I have, two of my children did wrestle, so I try to follow as closely as I can, despite not having kids in school any longer, but it is, anytime you hear Eastern States and people going to Eastern States, and you hear people going to the state championships and these various tournaments, wrestling is, and I actually attended a wrestling match last week here at home, wrestling is, for any of these students, is typically, specifically tournaments, is about a 12-hour day, I think, in most circumstances. And it's a commitment, really, that you have to live it to understand it, you know, compared to a lot of other sports. So I give all the credit in the world to both of those groups of wrestlers, and certainly to Coach Kapler, who has embarked on this brave new world, okay, with old things, right? He knows wrestling, that's old news for him, but this really cutting-edge movement that we see going on, basically, with female wrestling in the state is pretty exciting. Congratulations to all the MHL, MHAL award winners, by the way, as well, our other athletes. Congratulations to Becky Lee. That was pretty exciting to hear, that she did receive that grant, that small scholarship to continue her research, so congratulations to her as well, and thank you. Finally, Mr. Martelli, for your presentation. Nice to see that the good work is continuing, and very pleased that your transition, you know, is going as well as you'd like. I would say, in my remaining moments, I just want to say two things that I've been able to participate in on behalf of our Board. I was able to finally attend an Ulster County School Boards Association meeting of all of the school boards, and at that meeting, we were able to present, and there were many superintendents were there, many board members were there from various boards. Assemblyman Brian Marr was there, Assemblymember Shresta was there, and Assemblymember Jonathan Jacobson was there, as well as representatives from other offices. So they were able to hear really pretty clearly what some of the prevailing issues were and some of the priorities in terms of, you know, in terms of a school board and what we saw as being the priorities across the state. Facing education, the following week, and this is just last Thursday, I was able to attend the New York State School Boards Association lobbying event up in Albany, up in the Capitol, the Legislative Office Building. Again, a new thing for me, but we're very fortunate, I was able to participate in that with some Montior School Board members, as well as an Ulster Bosie School Board member. And again, we had the opportunity to meet with many of our elected representatives, Assemblymember Shresta, but in this instance, we also were very happy to be able to meet with our very own Senator Michelle Hinchey. And so we were able to bring up a lot of topics globally, such as the cuts in foundation aid and how they're going to impact, you know, districts really pretty broadly across the state. And because it was local and because we were lobbying, we spoke very specifically about $441,000 that Sawgarees was going to be missing as a result of the cuts in foundation aid. And we talked about some of the challenges that are presented by fully funding universal pre-K, but not providing, you know, the latitude for a district to figure out how to use new money, essentially. So a lot of the same kind of themes were coming up repeatedly, and what I found in speaking to these folks that are in these offices, is number one, they were very receptive, and very happily, they stated that they did not support the governor's current budget in the way that it's impacting school districts. So, you know, overall, I think that it's an exciting thing to recognize there's a direct connection oftentimes in having some of these conversations. We know that, you know, nothing is done until the budget itself is actually done, right? So there's a lot of backdoor trading and horse trading and details that are going to go into whatever the final product is, but having a seat at the table through something like the School Boards Association or whatever other mechanism we might be able to avail ourselves of is certainly, you know, probably the best that we can do in a very challenging budget year. So I appreciate the opportunity to do that, and I appreciate the opportunity to share that I have been doing that with all of you. Thank you.
Can I add one more thing?
Of course.
Sorry, Mrs. Tucci, and all the students who have been painting and decorating the sets, thank you very much.
Anyone else? Would you like to go again?
I sure hope I don't forget anybody.
Okay, we're moving to Board President's remarks. Today's been a long day for me, and, you know, as I get ready to come to a board meeting, I always worry, like, what's going to happen, who's going to show up? So I want to thank Mr. Martelli for giving us a very positive look at the high school and for the presentation of the girls' wrestling. And, you know, it's so good to see it grow and to see our girls successful. If budget season's coming up, so if there are needs for the girls' wrestling team, please send us an email, let us know what's going on and how we can support those efforts.
You're welcome, Matt.
And Dr. Ursig will be at the Catskill Holiday and Comedy Club venue this weekend. Thank you. We'll move on. Dr. Orbeck?
Thank you for the evening. So tonight, we just want to take a few moments to have a laser, like, focused on some of the great work that's happening, specifically celebrating the superheroes in Sawgarees that are teaching literacy. Literacy is multifaceted. It requires so much more than just a textbook that can teach a child how to read. If you think about it, you know, the amount of assessment that goes into what a child needs to know how to read is comprehensive, and we are working really hard to do a much better job with our Sawyers from the minute they come to us. So this year, our overarching umbrella is our three E's, which is our focus on engagement, equity, and empowerment for all adults and all students. And as we're working towards increasing our literacy, we have our philosophy of literacy, which I've shared with you multiple times. But at this stage, when we really think about where we want our students to be in 2045, literacy is a human right. It's also civil rights. It promotes access to being successful, and it promotes accuracy. So when we are being very explicit about how we are going to do this here in Sawgarees for the past three years, on every agenda, when we work with students and, more importantly, the teachers, we seek that we are going to have Rita Labs with accountable talks, so not just reading a picture book, but asking questions as you're going through it to make sure they're comprehending and building their vocabulary. Small group instruction that is differentiated in multiple ways, independent reading with conferring, because now we know that the research says drop everything and read does not work, because if you had a child like me, I would daydream. And also, writing is a process, and there's lots and lots of revision, which we certainly see in our research program at the high school. It's not an assignment. And what we're going to really focus in on tonight, and Anna Zivian is here to explain what we are doing with foundations, is explicit and direct phonics and morphology. So the bigger piece of this is that you probably have heard in the news, the current trend with literacy is you'll hear a lot of us got the science of reading. Sawgarees is situated very nicely. We've been working towards this for the past three years, without getting overly political, but staying standards-based and doing what we know is right for students so that they can read to that end. This year, we have added foundations to the third grade, and Anna Zivian, our literacy primary coach, not only has been assisting the teachers in how to implement this, but she's being publicly coached by an expert in foundations, in front of the teachers. So let's just pause and think about that. She's modeling how to be a coach, which in and of itself is incredibly vulnerable and brave, and really an amazing thing. So thank you so much for being willing to do that, and thank you for being here tonight to share a little bit more about our great work.
Thank you. Good evening. I just, my name is Anna Zivian, and I'm one of the instructional coaches at the primary level, and I just wanted to give you a little bit of insight into the work that we're into the work that we're doing for literacy with our district and some of the work that we're doing with teachers this year. When I was hired at the end of May, we hit the ground running, building on the foundation of equity and engagement and empowerment for all students and teachers. And we continue this work by generating cohesive curriculum maps. Here, Jamie Monroe and I are working with two first-grade teachers on the curriculum this past summer. These maps are a resource for teachers and for the district. They promote vertical alignment of the curriculum and ensure equity within the district so that all students have access to the curriculum and standards being taught. Here's a sample of our second-grade curriculum for writing. We have a common essential question. How do writers engage readers to learn? This question encompasses all the skills being taught for this unit in nonfiction writing. We include the concepts, the standards being taught, as well as the skills, assessments, and resources used. And we also include tools and strategies for differentiation so that all students have access to the curriculum and teachers have the support that they need to reach all students. And what I'm really excited to share with you tonight is what Dr. Orbeck was mentioning about the additional training and coaching work with foundations, one component of our literacy program during Sawdies. Sawdies has invested additional training for myself and the K through third-grade teachers in foundations. Foundations is a program that's rooted in the science of reading. And it's a program that includes all of the five components of reading, communicative awareness, phonics, word study, fluency, vocabulary comprehension. And what makes this program unique is the multisensory and multimodality methods that are employed when teaching children sounds and their represented letters and their combination into words, phrases, and sentences. And this year, so this program, this training model of Train the Trainer that we're piloting at Riccardi with the hope to replicate the model at the other elementary schools, includes a literacy specialist from Wilson attending Riccardi four different times throughout the year. And this is a unique time where teachers can receive feedback and ask questions about the program. The literacy specialist also models lessons and coaches teachers as they teach. And she provides feedback for me on how to support teachers with the program and also reviews recorded lessons of my own teaching. So teachers have shared a lot about what they have been learning already from this experience. They've given, they've shared about how they've learned about the importance of keeping an urgent pace to support student engagement. And they've also given me feedback recognizing how my teaching has changed and improved. And I wanted to just share briefly a story that a teacher shared with me last night during an interview on foundations, a little action research group that we have going. And she shared how, after she received feedback from the specialist and learning the science behind some of the practices in the program, she's since changed her teaching and been using more of the exact program language practices and the exact prescribed script, so to speak, with how students should form their letters. This is a kindergarten teacher. And since she has made these adjustments with her instructions, she's noticed a difference in skill development with her class. And witnessing her shift, her own belief and then her practice has been a really powerful experience. And to witness shifts and improvements with her own students as a result is even more powerful. So I wanted to just share a little bit about what the teachers are saying. So as I mentioned, as part of the program, I'm recording myself and reviewing the lessons that I teach with a literacy specialist. But I'm also using that as a tool to model with the teachers that I'm coaching with in our coaching cycle, how I can set my own goals to improve my practice as an instructor. And so I've done that and used those clips with teachers and focusing on how I can improve my questioning techniques of students. So just, you know, using these tools of data collection, like videos, has been a great tool to work with teachers, to build trust with them, to create a real partnership with them as a coach. So this is just a little bit of the work that we've been doing this year that I wanted to share with you. Thank you so much. It's a privilege to work in this district with such devoted teachers and staff and students. So thank you, Dr. Ursig. Thank you, Dr. Orbeck. Thank you for it.
Thank you.
I want to entertain a motion to approve item K Personnel, Instructional, Non-Instructional, K-1 through K-3L. K-3M has been withdrawn from the agenda. Some will move by Mr. Wells as your second. Second by Mr. McCleary. Any discussion? None being heard, call for a vote, also favor say aye.
Aye.
If we could just quickly recognize Taylor, who is our district clerk, who will be retiring at the end of this year. She and her colleague Kathy Snati, who is on the December agenda, have worked in our four district for 50 years. So that's going to be a tremendous loss come December. So thank you to both.
Park is leaving, we're on 27. Okay, I will entertain a motion for business office recommendations, items L-1 through L-11. Move by Mr. Bowles, your second. Mr. Riazzi, discussion?
Bob, I'd just like to make a comment. You know, obviously looking through all these, but I especially just want to mention that I appreciate the resolution, the two resolutions regarding the ICE IT Asset Management Audit and the Extra Classroom Activity Funds Audit. It takes a lot of work to put together an action plan. It's not just a matter of saying you've identified something that needs to be fixing, but it takes a lot of work to put together an action plan. And both of those are very, very complete. And I appreciate the fact that that's the way we roll. Thank you.
Anyone else? No further discussion. I'll call for a vote, also favor say aye.
Aye.
Item M, Board Action Items. I will entertain a motion to amend the agenda to add item M-17, which is the Sawdies Association, Teachers Association Memorandum of Understanding the Wilson Reading Program Resolution. Move by Mr. Riazzi, second by Mr. Wells. Lot of close seconds there. Any discussion on amending the agenda? None being heard, I'll call for a vote, also favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now I would entertain a motion to approve items M-1 through M-17.
So moved.
Move by Mr. Paulson. If there's a second, Mr. Wells. Any discussion? None being heard, I'll call for a vote, also favor say aye.
Aye.
I could also just take a moment and recognize the Coannis Club with their generous donation to get our Junior High Builders Club up and running. That was just approved with the prior approval. Thank you to them.
Committee reports. Audit Committee?
I wanted to just give an update. We did have an audit committee on Wednesday, February 7th. I attended it myself, Mr. Philman and Mr. Rooney, Ms. Mills and Dr. Ursig. At that meeting, we present, Joe Piro from Bonadilla Group presented the audit results from the single audit, and that's currently in draft. And that audit really is a report on the internal controls, the reporting and compliance in accordance with government auditing standards and uniform guidance on the federal programs utilized by the district. And specifically, they looked at the child attrition cluster, the special education cluster, and the COVID-19 Education Civilization Fund under the coronavirus aid relieved the Economic Security Act. With all of that, there were no findings noted in that report. And that should probably be on next month's agenda when they finalize that report. They also presented the Extra Classroom Activity Audit, which again was, we were given an unqualified opinion, which is basically no findings from an audit perspective. But they did issue a management letter of some of the deficiencies they noted. And that was in tonight's agenda. And as such, we, the district, presented a corrective action plan to address those deficiencies. One other thing that they did note during the discussion that didn't rise the level of an observation is there were some activity accounts that actually had what they would consider higher balances than normal. So again, some of these clubs, similar to PTA, which I'm involved in, are supposed to be fundraising for that year and those group of students in the club for that year. And, you know, to basically expend those funds as expeditiously as possible so not to really retain high balances year over year. So they did mention that as well. Another thing we did during the Audit Committee was the annual requirement to review the Audit Committee Charter. And so we reviewed that in comparison to the New York State School Boards Association template and made some conforming changes. That updated charter was approved and voted on tonight. Part of that is also to do an Audit Committee self-assessment, which we reviewed in this template as well. And we'll kind of look at that as a baseline to complete that in a future meeting. We did talk about the Controller's Audit and the revised corrective action plan that was presented here tonight. And finally, we did talk about the fact that the Bonadilla Group, who has audited our financial statements for the last three years, the 2022, 2023 year was their third year. So their contract did allow for a two-year extension. So we're, you know, the Audit Committee was discussing, you know, our next steps, whether we extend that or go out for an RP for a new auditor. So those discussions will continue. And our next Audit Committee meeting will be March 5th at 4:30 PM.
Thank you, Ms. Pellerose, you're very comprehensive. Mr. Paulson, for soldiers.
Yeah, our last meeting was Wednesday, February 7th. I want to thank Mr. Biford and Mr. Andrews for their presentation and covering everything. Our next meeting is Wednesday, March 6th at 5:00 PM in the media room. Thank you.
I'll secure it, Mr. Bow.
Thank you. Yes, we had a Policy Committee meeting February 6th. Just for anybody that's paying attention to the agendas, Board Action Items 8 through 16 were all policy-related. So it kind of gave you a little bit of a sense of the work that's involved with that committee. I'm helping chair the committee, or I guess I'm chairing the committee, I'm not helping. But I'm basically stepping into Dr. Ursig's shoes in terms of the manner and the means in which the agenda is set up and Mr. McCleary as well. So I appreciate their precedence in setting up such a very effective committee. We're always open to reviewing and contemplating other needs, other things perhaps that may not be identified, you know, as immediately. But my point is, the Policy Committee is like any of our committees. It's an open committee. And we're happy to see new people that are interested in joining. So if that happens to be you, please come and join us. Next meeting is March 5th. Thank you.
Board Operations Committee, we met last week on the 8th. One of the things that we did that was accomplished this evening by approving the board goals. We had worked on them with the entire board. The Board Operations Committee reviewed them and gave, put them forward on the agenda tonight for full board approval. So it's the first time I can remember that there's actually been formal Board of Education goals. We also, when we met, we developed an action plan. And we're prioritizing developing a Board Operations Manual. So as board members come and go, we'll make it easier for them to transition. I think I'll next people on the 15th. And that's it. Public recognition. Anyone from the public left wishing they would address the board, please approach the podium. None being heard, I will entertain a motion to recess into executive session. Some will. Move by Mr. Wells, second by Mr. Paulson. Any discussion? None being heard, also favor say aye.
Aye.